I'm calling this regular workshop meeting of Jacksonville City Council order. Council, you've been given a sign of the adoption of the agenda first and we're going to move number 10 ahead of number nine for reasons.
Who approval of the adoption is amended?
So moves.
Motion in a second.
Or second, sorry.
All those.
Got it.
It's just fast moving.
Quick pace.
Next, we have the minutes for the April 16, 2024 regular meeting along with six consent items.
So moves second, third.
We have a four. Any discussion? All those in favor signify as a nine. All opposed? Okay, question carries. So next we go down to number seven for discussion and this is the third quarter financial investment reports.
Thank you, Mayor. We sent out the next two items, we sent these out together. We sent the third quarter financial, the investment reports and the HR reports. HR report is going to be item number eight. We sent those out to council so you could look at them and then if you have any questions that we can go over now, Sabrina will be able to respond to almost every question you could ask. But the two points that I sent out were to look at the revenues and expenditures for both general fund and water and sewer fund, those being our larger two funds. As I pointed out on the reports, revenues exceed expenditures. So the basic math there is those are positives. As long as we finish the year that way, then we're going to feel like that's a successful year and we're satisfied with that. And then on the investment reports, you'll notice that the percentages of returns are higher than what we've seen previously. Again, that's just market based and that's our ability to monitor those items. The one item on the bottom, I believe that was around 1.04%, but that's timing. So as we looked at last year, you recall, those numbers last year would have been about 0.25%. So 1.04 greater than 0.25, but not as great as 5.04. So we like to give those information, those documents back to you so you can review those and then see where we're at. Questions on finance or investment report?
I know on the solid waste, I know we've combined the residential and the commercial. So we're saying right now, we're just, we're about 700,000 behind roughly instead of typically million or million plus that we.
Yeah, it depends on the transfer that we do as well when we transfer from the general fund. We only transfer half of the budget to transfer at the beginning of the year and then we wait until we get closer to the end.
So we've got a, and then the new budget coming up, we've got another $4 going on the residential side.
Mayor, that's one of those things we want to track. Obviously, last year was the first year of the $4 implementation. This year with the FY '25, we're proposing the second $4 implementation. And then by next year, remember, we're trying to track to close that gap down to basically a net sum zero or a plus one is what we're trying to have. And so we want to see that as we're moving through this year's final numbers, which will highlight that again when we get to the audit and then we'll track that again mid year. So we're making sure to bring that back because then FY '26, we want to review that overall. I think that's a highlighted point for us from staff perspective is we want that to be an active area of focus for council as we're moving forward, just like what you would have if our water and wastewater were behind schedule, but fortunately they're not.
What is that? What's $4? How many residential counts do you remember off the top of your head? 50,000?
15,000.
15,000 roughly.
It's been a minute since utility built one.
So 720,000 plus or minus? 60 a month?
And that's the second year of the $12 gap we decided not to close in one month. We stair stepping through that 12 and by the time we get to the end of that, there may be a smidge left over in the fourth year because costs won't stay the same over the time we're trying to close the existing gap, but hopefully we won't be looking at much more.
The way we're tracking, we're tracking next year after the third to be right at it. But again, think about the capital expenses. It's as the mayor said before, to keep ahead of the capital and the rising cost of delivery of services, that's going to be a challenge. So we hope that we've tossed that number at the right spot with forecasting to get it to that point. That would be the biggest highlight that we look at in terms of the operational and the revenues and operational sides. And so I appreciate you tracking those items because that's a three-year plan.
Sabrina's got her work cut out for her to get over here and finish up the year.
Ten quick.
It is, it comes quick, doesn't it?
It's all I've got on those two, Mayor, on that one.
Any other questions? All right, we got a number eight here is our human resources first quarter report.
Mayor, what we've done here is, so remember, we've tried to develop a system so the council can track the items that are pertinent for our staffing. And that was a concern three years ago. It's been a very aggressive approach from the council to close the gap in terms of the total vacancies. Remember, these are the stats you see here or just like the financial stats, they are a point in time and from when we sent you this, everything changes within a day. It's just the nature of the beast. You'll see from the report, 597 full-time people right now. Typically, we say that we're anywhere from 550 to 600. You also see 10 vacancies that we show at that point in time. That's a great number for the turnover numbers, but based on other factors, there's some things we just can't chase. So if we have people that are, if we have marine families that are PCSing, then that's going to impact ours and that happens often. That's just one of the things that we deal with. But you'll see on that first page inside of your agenda, the full-time employees, the vacancies in 2022, 18.34%, 2023, 15.19% and now below that 15% threshold at 14.91% for 2024. So we see that as a positive that we're tracking. It's just showing some of that growth in terms of everything that the council does to track these areas. So I think you're seeing some real positive trends. We included some additional statistical information just to show population breakdown and what we're seeing on overall applications as well. I think the application sign is a positive. It's not just the hires, it's the interest we're seeing in local government and our ability to attract that talent as they come in. As we've said before, every, almost every Monday, we're bringing in new talent to the team and that's such a value add because it allows us to have different mindsets, perceptions, past experiences and just another set of eyes and ears to look at our overall operations. So I think this is another positive report. You're seeing that across the board through all departments. We're putting a lot of time and energy into making sure we're bringing in a good field of candidates and then bringing them into the fold. Yes, Mayor?
I'll just say it's good to see the retention and the years of service celebrations that we're doing well with retaining good employees. We don't want to see them running away and go another places, so that's a good thing. And if my numbers are correct here, it looks like on the diversity side of things, if you add up the various breakdowns of race and ethnicity here, our city population is 24.3% other than white and our staffing is 39.9. So I think we've done, we're exceeding statistically, exceeding the makeup of our own community, which I think is a positive, something we should take a moment and say yay.
That's good news, too. Yeah, that's, it's an intentional focus and remember, that just happens out of the total number of applications. That's what happens. So our challenge with the recruitment side is to cast that net widely enough so that we bring in the applicants. Then the people we hire, they're still going to be the best candidates. They're going to be the top of that group. And if we cast that net wide enough, we feel confident we're going to bring in a population that's representing our community and the people we serve because there is a value there. We see that, we want to have people that come into the office that look like us and we look like them and they have some of the similar life experiences, which is also a challenge to find out. But if you're bringing in enough people in the applicant pool, you're going to find people that have those similar experiences. In this last quarter, we did have a 30-year celebration in this quarter. I don't know if we listed by name on here, but Pam McIntosh, 30 years and we also had 45-year celebration. So Carlotta, 45 years. We're looking for 60 is what we're going to aim for with Carlotta.
Are you seeing a, I know on the exit interviews before, one of the main reasons leaving was the salary to pay. Has that been a positive trend also?
It fluctuates. So we see a lot of positive on not having that as one of your issues, but if we see someone on year one or year two that's exiting, they may still say, this is what's happening. So if they come in at an entry level position, it doesn't matter what that job pays, they may have the opportunity to find a higher paying job somewhere. And I think that's a challenge. This is a long game in local government. If you're not committed, if you're not committed to the retirement system and the 401K or 457, you're not going to see that financial benefit upfront on the front end. You've got to have a play that's going to be a little longer. So we're not seeing that with the longer committed individuals.
Something else I noticed, you know, Ms. Edwards talking about ethnicity, Hispanics in our population is 20% now. They're, the blacks are no longer the number one minority. The Hispanics have certainly taken over and I guess that's probably a trend nationwide too, I think. Not just focused here, but nationwide. That's a, and we're seeing more migrations as we speak on a daily basis from the Hispanic or Latino.
And that's still going to be a challenge for us historically. Part of this in North Carolina that I know to be true is that making sure you're tracking the actual population of the Hispanic or Latino population, that's been a challenge. Now, as we're seeing people that are being counted, you're going to see your percentages change. So for us as an organization, we want to continue to attract those individuals into the organization. Then we may not hire them, but we want to get them into the hiring pool so that those candidates will continue to be here. Some of that's going to be outside of the U.S. We've had a couple hires, it's fantastic. That's a challenge, but it's not something that, we've turned it actually into a success. So we just have to make sure we're reaching people where they're at to make sure they know these positions go to them as well because that 20%, that's a significant percentage of the population.
Have to say that I was not really wildly in favor of using the, our cohort, the league information, but it's turned out, you know, it turned out to be a good thing for us. So I'm glad that they overrode my some concerns, so the other council members.
Can you just be a little bit skewed too though, when you're talking about the 20% in the population, that this is counting a lot of military personnel that are not eligible for the job market?
It could be, especially with the census. That's the point. And some of the challenges with the census is being able to extrapolate that information correctly and we deal with that internally in trying to make sure we're pulling the information. So I think you're going to see the ebb and flow, Mayor. At one point, we were talking about the African-American population being about 13% and the Hispanic, Latino population being 18%. But if we maintain the 2020 census info, then we keep that baseline. So we work from there, but know that you get an informal update every year so we can pull that. We just don't want to go back to those.
And why I'm saying that is because you look here under hired, it's 11.2% where population is 20%. That's probably skewing that number there is you have a lot of active duty military that are not job eligible.
And you need to realize this is two for the first quarter. So that's just the hires for that three months.
Yeah, the one thing we know for sure is the hired. We know that our numbers are spot on because that's a percentage of who we're bringing in. The population numbers a little, could ebb and flow based on what you're saying, Mayor, the transition.
Are you saying these are new hires only? Is that what we're looking at?
On the left-hand column.
Yeah, the hired, new hired only.
Just in case, those are our hired in this quarter.
Okay.
So we track it every quarter, you'll get these same numbers, well, similar. I will let you know though, if you do look just overall, we were tipping over 30% in turnover and attrition. And when you look at it now, particularly with our full-time at 14.9, a lot of this is trending this way because of the difference that you made when we decided to put that little over 2 million into employee salaries based on our data with NCLM, our peer cohort. So that's made a huge difference. You remember when we talked about the fact that we didn't have enough applications coming in? Look at the applications, we're 36% up just in this quarter. We talked about the fact that people were no-showing for interviews and then when they did interview, they were given a job offer, no-show for their first day. And we don't have any of that anymore. So what you did really did truly make a big difference, so we appreciate that.
Water pool, the better chance we're getting better people.
That's right. High quality. We've got some very high performing employees now and we really believe that's made a difference.
Are those 2020 census figures or updated figures from the state?
2020.
They're 2020 figures. Yeah, we don't go with the updated on this report.
Okay.
That's what, we could pull that up and update it, but the problem is if you go back and look at a previous report and then you see a different number, then that may skew what we're saying in the course of multiple reports.
That is, we don't skew anything.
We don't want to give you a skewed number. That's just something Kimberly and I sit here and argue about. We don't want you to argue with us as well. Mayor, back to Mr. Wardens' point too, on the league data, I think the value there is, what a lot of people do with the league data is they just take it at face value without defining the market. A big move by the council, as Kimberly pointed out, you have to define the market that we're going to compare to. And you know, a lot of times we look at what that impact means, but once we define that market, that gave us the range and that's across the board. So we like to keep that defined as what the market is.
Is that right? Is that right? Oh my gosh.
I would have wrote, oh, is that right?
Thank you very much. So we're all the great report.
Good job.
Thanks, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your leadership.
It wasn't a good trade.
We're reporting. Thank you, David.
Yes.
We got number 10. This is a system development fee discussion.
Mayor Wally and Mr. Parker are going to handle this one and this is something that they've presented twice now, so we should be really good at this point by the time they got here. Mr. Wardens is present for four of those presentations and we'll see how it goes.
Let me do Ryan's real quick.
Good job.
You're welcome, sir.
I credit yours, I think. I've heard it once, bro. You have it, man. Really.
Mayor, council, good evening. We appreciate the opportunity to come to you and talk to you about our system development fee study that we have out. This is Darryl Parker with Will Dan. He's our financial consultant and he's going to walk you through the analysis that they performed. Just as a quick reminder, system development fees are a one-time payment that developers or builders pay to buy into the system. So they are what some people reference as impact fees, some have referenced it as facilities fees, which is what ours were before we adopted the system development fees. And all of that changed with House Bill, I think it was 436 a few years ago, actually it was six years ago at this point. So with that, the specific requirements went into what could be included in these fees and how they were to be calculated. So just as a quick overview, they have to be updated every five years. It has to be a study that is performed by a professional. It is not something that we can do in-house. It's specifically identified and one of those is a financial consultant, which is how we got Will Dan. So recognizing that we needed to stay in compliance with the law, we advertised an RFP for services and Will Dan responded and was selected to perform our analysis. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Parker and let him go over the actual report with you and what our findings are, you know, give a quick synopsis of, we're really close to where we need to be. So I think that's just a testament to the processes that the council has implemented with the 10-year plan and the investments that we've made in our system. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Parker.
Thank you, Wally. And council, thank you for having me here tonight and actually for selecting our firm to help you with this project. It's, as you'll see here, there's some processes and a lot of calculations and we're happy to help you guys out. So the, there's actually, Wally mentioned the House Bill 436, which led to a statute that pretty much governs how these fees are to be, how they're to be determined and adopted and implemented. So basically, you've heard it's for new development. So the, you know, kind of one of the benefits here is that these fees don't impact your existing customers in a negative way. They actually impact them in a positive way because the money that's coming in from new development to help pay for new development is money that doesn't have to come from your existing rate payers and customers. So that's our goal here is to have growth and help pay for growth. So there is a process and here again, this is defined by statute. So there has to be, and Wally mentioned, a fee analysis done by a financial professional and our firm, Will Dan, meets that qualification. And we've got to apply to what, it's kind of, kind of a little bit loose in terminology, but there are some generally accepted methodologies for this type of fee calculation. Even before the adoption of the law by North Carolina, there was kind of an industry standard. We'll see that tonight. You have to have a capital improvements program. That's the CIP that you see referenced there. And you've got to have that CIP, no less, no less than a five-year planning horizon, no more than a 20-year planning horizon. The CIP that you have in place right now, what's an 11-year period. And so we've, that falls within that range and we've used your capital plan in this analysis. So once we go through the analysis, which we worked with your staff to get to where we are now, we prepared a report and that report has to be posted on your website, on the city's website for at least 45 days to allow the public to see it. If they've got questions, if they've got comments, they get those back to staff and we help address those. There has to be a public hearing and so any modifications that come out of that need to be done kind of as part of that post 45-day period and the public hearing process. The fees need to be adopted by resolution or ordinance and the analysis does have to be updated every five years. And so that's kind of where we are now. You currently have fees in place and they were due to be updated. So what we'll look at next are those existing fees. We'll see how those compare to other utilities in the area. And I want to show you your capital program because, you know, the capital, your CIP, your capital plan drives not only the calculation of these fees, but also what's, what'll happen with your monthly user rates for your customers and that kind of thing. That's not part of this analysis though, but that capital plan drives everything financially moving forward. So your existing fees, you can see they're separated by water and wastewater and we'll do the same thing in moving forward in the analysis. They're applied by meter size and we were actually happy to see that because that is kind of the industry norm for these types of fees. The rationale being that, so your typical residential customer is going to be that smallest, that first line of the 5/8 inch meter. As customers come online that need larger meters, it's because they are going to have more demand, they're going to place more of an impact on your system. And so they need to pay a capacity or capital related fee, more so than the typical residential customer. So that's, and having those fees incremented by meter size, we have American Water Works Association, which is kind of the, they're kind of the guideline for the water utility industry in this country. They basically have a structure that is defined within their manuals, so we can follow those manuals, makes it, it makes it here consistent with the industry norm, makes it legally defensible. So, you know, we like all those. And so what you're doing now is good, it was just time to readjust and relook at those fees. So we're going to focus on just that 5/8 inch meter for most of this analysis because that's going to be the majority of your, of your new growth, at least in the residential sector. So your current fee, let's step back if we just focus on that one. If we combine the water and the wastewater, $6165 per new residential connection. So here's kind of where that compares with other utilities in the area. So you're, right now, you're right in the middle, just below the average line of that group and so you're kind of, kind of in a, kind of in a sweet spot, if you will. Now you have to remember, you, these, these types of fees are different when you're looking at comparisons, it's different than comparing the monthly user rates because these are capital related fees. You don't know what some of these other utilities are, have to spend on their capital. They may have, you know, more costly, let's say wastewater treatment processes. They may have more costly disposal requirements, that type of thing, or might be the other way around. You guys are kind of in an enviable situation. Some of your water, you can pull right out of the ground and it doesn't even need treatment, but other parts of your water supply require treatment. So it just, the different processes drive different cost structures. So we do this comparison really for information purposes only, but you don't want to use that as a basis for making any decision. So I told you we'd look at your capital program. So right, we've got everything separated between water and wastewater, as you saw, because we're going to calculate fees separately for water and wastewater. We also break them, break the, each of those into two functional components of either treatment or transmission slash collection on the sewer. We like to use common terminology. So we've got your, your total capital program of about $118 million and here again, that's for that 11-year period. Now, we're not trying to recover every capital cost. You can see we've got a column there for excluded capital and I'll explain that in a little more detail as we move forward. And so what we're really looking at is that far right column of recoverable costs. So those, you can see it kind of boils down to a lower number and here again, I'll explain why here just a little bit as we move forward. And by the way, stop me with any questions. I mean, this is not meant to just be a formal discussion that you, I want you guys to give me any thoughts or feedback you have to. So when we're talking about methodology, I mentioned there, the statute identifies methodology, but what they, what they identify is actually consistent with the industry norm anyway. So we've got the buy-in method. What that does is that looks at your existing assets, your existing facilities, their capacities and comes up with a cost for capacity for those, just the existing assets, what's already in the ground. Then there's also the incremental or marginal cost method, which looks just at the capital plan, just the CIP, says, okay, we're building these, these facilities, adding this additional capacity and so we need to come up with that cost. And then there's what we've done here, the combined method, kind of a hybrid of the two. Basically, it results in kind of a weighted average cost of your capital existing and So when we look at the existing water assets, what we're really looking to recover are the big pieces, the big components, the backbone of your system. So we're looking at water supply, we're looking at treatment, we're looking at the big storage facilities, major transmission lines. We're not looking at, at the localized distribution and collection, but the big stuff that kind of provides benefit to the entire system and same with pumping facilities. On the wastewater side, here again, we're looking at the big things, the major lines, the force mains, lift stations, equalization basins, treatment obviously and disposal. So what we exclude from those existing assets, anything that's contributed from developers because you got to remember what we're trying to come up here is, you know, is with a cost per gallon of capacity, per unit of capacity, but cost that has been incurred by the city, by the utility. Anything that's been developed or contributed was not your cost, so we can't recover that. Here again, we're not looking at the small local lines, we're not including meters, anything that's like neighborhood specific as we would say, and anything that's been grant funded. that's like neighborhood-specific, as we would say, and anything that's been grant-funded. And we'll talk about some of your future capital projects that are going to be grant-funded, and we'll discuss those as well. Here again, if the utility didn't incur that cost, we can't recover that cost as part of this fee. I say can't, I'm not sure that the statute would not allow it, but it shouldn't be recovered twice, is our thought. So our capital plan, our planned assets, what we're trying to identify are the capacity expansions, projects that are adding capacity for facilitating future growth, or any major upgrades. Those upgrades could either be improving efficiency of the system, they could be regulatory-driven, just things you have to do because of state and federal regulatory changes. So those are the things that we include for recovery as part of your capital plan. What we exclude out of the CIP for recovery, anything that's renewal and replacement, what we call R and R. That's basically if you've got some old lines out there that just, they might be 50 to 100 years old, they might be breaking and just having issues, so those lines need to be replaced, and your capital plan includes some of those projects. They don't add new capacity, they don't add any new benefit, basically, they're just replacing what was already there. So we're not going to include those costs for recovery. And also, things like, you know, your vehicles, any admin-type stuff. And here again, if we've got capital projects that we're looking to do in the future that are either going to be grant-funded or contributed by developers, we exclude those as well. So what we're looking to come up with here is our recoverable costs. You can see at the top, we've got the existing that we've talked about. In the middle, we've got the capital improvement program. We've got it separated between water and sewer, and so we can combine those to calculate our costs. But then there's also, there's kind of what that looks like from a visual. We've got our existing and planned, and combine those. And what we didn't see on that last page, though, is the step down toward the bottom where we're subtracting out credits. So what those credits are, we start with the debt service credit, and that's applied to the existing assets. And what we're trying to acknowledge there is capture the fact that, you know, some of those existing assets that you currently have that provide benefit to your current customers and provide service, and will probably provide some service to future customers, some of those have been funded with debt. So that debt, right now, is paid through your monthly user rates from your customers that are connected to the system as part of your budget process. That's how you help set your rates. You're recovering your operating costs and capital-related costs, administrative costs, and debt service is part of that. So what we're trying to say is, okay, since we don't want a customer buying into that existing system and then paying again through the monthly user rates for that debt service component, so we just back that debt out, the remaining balance of the existing debt. So we apply that credit to the existing assets. We do a similar process to the CIP, and this is required by the statute. So we make a 25% adjustment to the CIP. And I think their thought when they put that in is kind of the same thing that we've talked about, is making sure we don't recover things that shouldn't be recovered. So we're already excluding those, but we also want to show the good faith that we're making the same adjustment that, on a percentage basis, required by the state. And then, so what that gives us is our net recoverable costs, and we'll see this as we move forward. So that's kind of what that looks like. We take our combined, separated between water and sewer and our various components, we back out the debt, the combined credits of the debt service and the CIP adjustment. And so this all boils down to a net capital number that we're including as part of our calculation. Here's kind of what that looks like visually, we won't spend a lot of time on that. The main thing I want you to see here is, remember, we're keeping these separated not only by water and sewer, but by component of treatment or transmission. And what you'll see here in a minute, the reason we do that is when we're trying to come up with a cost per gallon of capacity, treatment capacity is one number, transmission capacity is another number. And so that's what we're trying to separate those out. So you saw on the previous slide with the table on it, our net recoverable, so what we're looking at here is our cost per gallon of capacity. So we take that net recoverable amount, we divide by the capacities. Here again, as I mentioned, treatment capacity being one number, transmission capacity being another. Also, water and wastewater have different capacities within those. So our ultimate goal is to come up with that cost per gallon of capacity. So that's what we've done here, and so with those, we can calculate a fee. So we take our cost per gallon of capacity, we apply a level of service, a number per, we call what we define as an ERU, an equivalent residential unit. That's your typical residential, single-family household. And so right now, the city uses 360 gallons per day for planning purposes, for planning on future capacity and facilities and growth. And so we apply the number that you currently use for planning purposes, and you do it right now equally for water, wastewater, which makes sense. And so with that, we come up with our SDF, our system development fee per ERU. And here's what those numbers result in. So you can see at first column, we've got the existing, you saw that earlier, the 6165 that are calculated. So what we're seeing right now is the calculated amount for water is coming in higher than your existing fee for water. The sewer side is coming in lower. At first glance, we were a little bit surprised by that, two reasons. One, that it dropped a little bit at all, it didn't drop a lot, but that it dropped at all. And two, that the number is not significantly higher than the water, because we oftentimes see on the sewer side, just because sewer capacity on a cost per gallon is so much more expensive to build. But then, you know, we're having this discussion, you know, with Wally and Roy, and it kind of turns out that what's driving that is, you guys have been fortunate enough to get a pretty sizable grant to fund some of your wastewater plans moving forward. And, I mean, Wally can expand on that if you need that.
The $20 million is certainly was our bonus. That's what that number is.
Which is a big number, and like I said, you've been fortunate with, you know, for that. And so that, you know, here again, since we back out those grant-funded projects, that makes that number lower than it would be otherwise if you were having to fund it out-of-pocket, which is not a bad thing. So as we talked about earlier, you do your current fees by meter size, and we're sticking with that same methodology. That second column from the left, you can see where it says meter factor. Here again, I mentioned that we do these based on AWWA standards and kind of the industry norms. Those meter factors are right out of those manuals. Basically, some engineers back in the day did tests on the meters, and they said, okay, well, if we assume that our standard is the 5/8-inch, and we get so much water through that meter at a given water pressure and a given amount of time, and we do the same thing on the 3/4-inch meter, it can get 1 1/2 times more water through it. 1-inch meter can get 2 1/2 more times. So since those are our actual demand calculated numbers, here again, based on physics and engineering, we can apply those factors to our SDS and come up with those fees by meter size. Here again, consistent with the industry standards, legally defensible. So here's how that looks compared to the comparison group that we looked at earlier. So the total fee combined only went up by $5 between the two, so you really just jumped yourself a little bit, but not by much. So you're still right in that middle, slightly below the average, and in that kind of sweet spot of comparisons. So I'll turn next steps over to Wally.
So we already have the report, which looks like this, out on our website for public comment. So we'll be going through that public comment period. Once that's complete, we'll take any comments that we receive and pull those together, analyze them, and then figure out whether we need to modify the report or just add an addendum saying, you know, the comments we received. And following that, we will need to do a public hearing with city council, that is required by the general statute. And from there, you can either consider whether, you know, based on the public comments you receive, you approve that fee that evening, or we bring it back to you. Couple of things I will say is, the manager mentioned, we've given this presentation twice already. We presented to stakeholders from the development community. I worked with Ryan in planning to identify those that had built over the last five years fairly significantly. I actually put that in a management report and sent it out to you so you could kind of preview those, but if you, I would bet that you recognize 90% of the names on those, that list, because that's who's done the majority of the work in Jacksonville. So they had this presentation, they asked a few comments, and, you know, they appreciated the transparency, but there really wasn't, really wasn't any major comment, they were happy that it wasn't significantly higher.
They were probably surprised.
They were. And then, we also did it for water and sewer advisory committee that same evening. So we have done that. The last thing I'll say is, you know, that 6170 number is what the analysis supports. Doesn't mean that's what council has to adopt. You can't go over that, because then it wouldn't be legally supported. But if you decided, for whatever reason, you wanted to be under that, you could. Historically, we've adopted what's maximum supported because we want to see growth pay for itself. That's what the water and sewer advisory committee supported and recommended. So those are things that we'll be bringing back forward for you to consider. And with that, we'll be happy to answer any questions.
Do you know what Onwasa's development fees, system development?
Based on this one, it is $7,800. Onwasa differs slightly from us, though. Onwasa does not have a 5/8s meter. They standardize, it's been, it's probably been 10 years ago, or maybe a little bit more, but they standardized on the 3/4-inch meter. So every home has a 3/4-inch meter. So the 5/8s isn't an option.
And their sewer fees are higher, that's what's driving that to higher numbers.
They are. So, and again, you know, but Onwasa has different facility improvements that they have to, you know, that they have to support, and of course, a wider system. Their system is more spread out than our system is. So I'm sure all of that goes into their fee also.
Mayor, and the purpose of this slide, as Mr. Parker pointed out, is just like what Mr. Warden's saying, you're going to get comments from people saying, we do business in these other areas, how does this compare? You just want to know factually. We're right in the middle, and pulling out Onwasa is really easy for us, because that's our closest partner in the region. But looking at that number, it doesn't really matter what the other numbers are, because it's based on our expenses. It's just nice to have it in your pocket, just for that reason. And like Wally's pointing out, it doesn't mean Onwasa's number's good or bad, it means they have different expenses, because they have different debt, things that they're doing, and as they're expanding their system, they're going to have more challenges at the current point in history that they're having to factor in. So I'm like Mr. Warden, when Wally first said this was our change, I was a little surprised as well that it was a $5 net change, but it's warranted based on the report and the numbers.
If you have a builder in town who may be trying to decide between county or a city, city build, I mean, that, you know, I don't know how much, it would take a large number of residential units in order to make a major difference, but, you know, it's some little factor that they probably would look at.
It is.
How does the water side on Onwasa compare with the city, water?
We didn't break theirs out, but if I remember right, their water is higher than ours.
I know the fees are now, and of course, they're getting ready to do another 8%, if they haven't already, as part of the budgetary process.
Yes. And they had, in their monthly fee, their rates, they had a five-year plan that they were following, but, and all we did was totals. We didn't break everybody's out, or sewer, we just did it combined.
I have a charter report that separates that house.
See if we can come up with something for you.
There it is.
So Onwasa's water is 2983, and their sewer is 4823. And our water would be, I just had the, 2799.
$100 cheaper there on that side.
Yes, just the water. Sewer's what brings development to the city.
Sewer's the main problem they've got.
Yes.
Remember, in Onwasa, you can't go with the 5/8s meter like you can in the city. So it's actually a little bit more than that, right?
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Parker.
Thank you. Mayor, like you see, you'll have this come back after that 45-day period that Wally pointed out, so that'll be that timing when council will ask you to take action.
And if anybody can't read, it's available on the website, you know, to go to sleep, or, you know, can't's not the right word, needs to read to go to sleep, this is it, right here.
So you're saying it's not exactly riveting?
Yeah.
It's a really good document.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, sir.
We'll move on to number nine, this is the development of the head of size.
Real quick, before we jump to that, if I can, thank you for flip-flopping us, because planning and permitting inspections, we're the ones that collect those system development fees. So the builders, like Wally had at the committee, they're kind of used to that. But if somebody buys an infill lot, that $6,000 or $7,000 cost that's added to the building permit fees, that may be a shocker to them, but it's not all building permit fees, it's a lump sum with the system development fees and the building permit. So we are the department that gets to collect those fees on behalf of the city. So you ever get a complaint about the permitting fees, you know, it's important that we look at the breakdown, is it the system development fees that's raised that concern, or is it our actual permit fees? So, or the teeth.
Don't blame it on Wally. Wally's helping, Ryan just keeps doing this to him.
Somebody's stuck under the bus.
That's right, it's going to be this guy.
I point that out because if you don't know that, if somebody's not expecting that, then it's part of the process. The builders know that, but if you buy an infill lot, then you may not be expecting that.
What is a typical, like a single-family home, just with permits and fees, what does it usually cost?
With the system development or without the system?
With it, just as a total package, or like?
Well, it's $6,200 plus about $1,500, so.
So maybe 75, 77?
Yeah. I was just curious, thank you.
Mayor, just to give you the lead-in before Ryan starts, I sent an email out, maybe yesterday, maybe last week, but it's to tell you the history of where this came from. This conversation came up from Aldersgate, asked us the question, and said, hey, we've got a sign in our, in the median area that has been damaged, we want to do a repair to it, and so we thought, hey, this seems like a good idea, let's figure out what happens. Turns out, we look at some of these signs that Mr. King's going to talk about, and they're non-conforming signs, so we decided we would go back through and try and look at all throughout the city, bring information back to the council, because in order for Aldersgate to make a change with their existing sign, you would have to make a change from our ordinances. So we took this as an opportunity to look at multiple things within the city, bring it back as a workshop, get some feedback from council, and figure out how we need to move forward to try and either correct an issue or stay the course. This is a standard process that we see with city code, you find something, you address You find something, you address it, and then this is where we would ask for that direction. So that'll be the, the end of Ryan's presentation, is to say, we need some dialogue and feedback back from council.
All right, thank you. So within the Unified Development Ordinance, we have Article 7, which deals with non-conformities. And basically, a non-conformity is something that at one time was legal and allowed to be there, and through the years, whether it be city code, zoning ordinances, UDO, no longer conform to the current term and requirements. The purpose and intent of this article is to regulate, but also limit the continued existence of non-conformities. If, if we don't want to do that, then we might as well just say, hey, they're legal to be that way, and then it's no longer an issue. They can continue until they are removed, but not incur their survival, except for limited circumstances. Minor repairs and maintenance are allowed. Let's see. We also get into what can be done. For example, you cannot move it in whole or in part, except to bring it into compliance. Additionally, if it is damaged or destroyed, casualty damage, then if it is more than 50%, then the, the new sign would have to conform to current regulations, and that's kind of where we are with Aldersgate. It's been damaged, maybe not to 50%, but they now desire to pull that down and reconstruct it, and based on that, they now have to comply with the current code. So some of the issues that are, that are here in both the Unified Development Ordinance, but also the city code, is that it says, no portion of a sign or supporting structure shall be established within an existing right-of-way boundary or future right-of-way boundary. There is a caveat to that, in the downtown area, where you have things that project over the sidewalks, they are allowed, if they are attached to a building, they can encroach with an encroachment agreement, which Public Services handles those encroachment agreements.
How do, how do we, how do we know what a future right-of-way boundary is?
It would be identified on a quarter map. So if there's a known, I know the one that's probably the most famous was when we were going to run a parallel facility on Highway 17, North Marine Boulevard, going out past Pine Green, where we used to have this big setback off of the road because of that future right-of-way.
Okay.
I don't know that we have a whole lot of those right now. I think that there was some legislative changes, and lawsuits, and things like that, so I don't know that there's a whole lot of those.
Right, I know we did away with a lot of that.
Yeah. So since we're talking about residential development signs, I just wanted to go ahead and throw this information out there, that currently residential development entrance signs are limited to 32 square feet in area, and maximum height is six feet, maximum width a 10. So there's some additional provisions, more so than just cannot be within the right-of-way. So some other items to note is the Gilbert, County Gilbert versus Reed Supreme Court case, which basically went all the way to the highest court of the land, which invalidated an ordinance that treats signs differently based on their content. So that's where you can't look at a sign and say, okay, we're going to allow that sign to do that, but we can't, we're not going to allow you to do this based on that. Now, I think there's a lot of codes across North Carolina, and probably across this country, that still have some deficiencies. I think our ordinance has some deficiencies, where you've got to be careful, because if somebody wants to file a suit, then, you know, we're going to be dealing with that through the court system. It does allow us to look at it and say, okay, well, that's an on-premise or off-premise sign. Also, the general statute as it relates to DOT rights-of-ways, you know, this has come up recently in some other discussions, but NCGS 136-32 prohibits signs within the right-of-way, with the exception of the political signs. Once again, that may tie into the Gilbert case, but that's a whole nother discussion. The reasons for the, the prohibition within public, within the right-of-way is public safety, site triangles, visibility, liability. So if you build a brick, you know, very sturdy monument-type sign, and you're going 35, 45 mile an hour down the road, and you hit that sign, it could be dangerous. I mean, that's why I think if you look at DOT, they've gotten rid of some of the larger street trees along Lejeune Boulevard, for example, they want to go with a smaller tree, something that can be, basically breakaway, for that, that safety component. Consistency with regulations, there's a lot of things that these codes and ordinances don't allow to be constructed within the rights-of-way. It's not private property, it's the municipal's land to do with as it relates to infrastructure, things of that nature.
Let me ask a question back on the, where the state regulates it. They have regulation of signs and right-of-way of, is it public roads? Is it state-maintained roads? What does their, what do their regulations apply to?
It's, it's their rights-of-way, the state.
So a, a city street would not be covered by?
That is correct.
Okay.
That's where our local adopted rules and regulations that the mayor and council adopt, those rules would apply on those streets.
So we do have some, obviously, that are in DOT, DOT right-of-way potentially, but we also have some in city.
That's correct, and I can try to point those out when I go through the pictures. So we, like we do a lot of times, we look at what other places are doing, so based on the ordinances that we're able to review, these are just a snapshot, I've thrown DOT in here. Other cities and towns, really didn't look at counties, because counties typically don't regulate the streets, that's DOT. So just made it a point to kind of point out Town of Boone, Greenville, Wilmington, Sanford, Hickory, Apex, Havelock, they all prohibit signs within the rights-of-way, just like currently we do. So what is a sign? Pretty much, when we had that board of adjustment case about 15 or 20 years ago, with the Sleeping Dragon, we had to go back and really do a better job of defining what a sign is. The problem is, it could almost be, anything is basically a sign. But we wanted to kind of share this definition with council, because that's something we probably don't look at all the day, you know, every day, all day, but basically, any form of publicity directing attention to something, by a means of these things. A development entrance sign is one that we specifically define as a sign that identifies or advertises a residential subdivision, a multifamily development, office park, industrial park, shopping center, et cetera. And one, a non-conforming sign is one that just does not comply with the current or subsequent amendments of the city code or UDO. So here, I'm going to give you some examples, both commercial and residential. These are more recent ones. The Public Shopping Center, Academy, Western Forum. If you notice, these are kind of off to the side, behind the sidewalk. These are on private property. These are within some sort of sign easement, if they're not owned by the same individual. A lot of times, the developer, they'll put that sign easement over before they sell off the out parcels, so they have that visibility at the entrance to that development. So Public sits way off of Western Boulevard by a few hundred thousand feet. Their signs right here is closest possible to Western Boulevard, to be able to gain that attention, as the motoring public goes down Western Boulevard.
Are those permitted?
Those are both permitted.
Conforming?
Conforming, correct. And one other thing that I'll show you, like with this Woodlands sign, off to the side, this sign has been here for years. It's just, they put it off to the side, not within a right-of-way, still has good visibility, still functions as a development entrance sign, for at least the Woodlands community. We all know that you can also get into many other sub-subdivisions within this, at this entrance, but, you know, Woodlands is the one that had that easement, so they were able to put that sign there.
Even though there's no, there's no HOA, who is responsible for maintaining it?
So, I think that there's, there's a city component. Do we maintain some of the landscaping aspect of this sign?
No, sir.
You do not?
No, sir.
Okay, so I know that recently, this sign, they kind of refaced it, so it sounds like the members of the neighborhood just kind of take care of that.
Similar to what, similar to what Aldersgate would want to do, they just got a neighborhood group, said, let's, let's fix up. Okay.
But it's not in the right-of-way.
It's not in the right-of-way, that's right. It's off to the side.
That sign is not in the right-of-way.
It's not in the right-of-way.
It's not. Bill Ford Holmes, they recently installed this, from what I remember, it's a fairly new sign, it's not very large, probably would have went with a different set of landscaping to go around it, because you can't even hardly tell that that's the entrance to the neighborhood. It's a low-lying, you know, granite monument and brick sign, with the, the boxwoods around it, and it's just not, it's not really visible, but it's, you can see this, the telephone box, and the, or telephone pole in the utility box here to the side, it's behind that. So that private property owner gave the homes, whoever organized that, permission to have that sign set up on their private property.
So that's compliant?
That is compliant. And these examples that I'm showing you actually are, go back 15, 20, 30 years, pre-UDO even, that, you know, Carolina Forest at the bottom here, and Williamsburg Plantation, it's off to the side, it's not within the right-of-way. Now, the landscaping block here on the Carolina Forest sign, that may be questionable if that's in the right-of-way, because it's getting pretty close to behind the curb, but the sign part that was actually permitted is on private property with an easement. So now, so let me, let me back up just a bit. So these signs are both on city rights-of-way. This is at the intersection of a city right-of-way and a DOT right-of-way, but more than likely, this is behind, this would maybe both, but this is probably on the, on the city side of the right-of-way. This, once again, Harv, I believe that's, we take that city?
State.
State. So it's kind of at a corner, I'm not sure whether that, it's not in the right-of-way, but, but it's, it's on private property, so I guess that doesn't matter, but that would be a city and a state road.
And the only time that future right-of-way is if it's identified on a map. In other words, you just can't say that's in a, if we, we may decide 10 years from now to widen a street, therefore, it's in a future right-of-way, that doesn't matter?
It would be identified.
Okay, okay.
Normally, on your transportation plan, where you'd see so that.
And we'd have to check, there may not even be any of those anymore at this point in time. We'll have to check that, and we'll let you know. Both of these signs are the corner of both the city street and a, and a DOT roadway. Once again, city and DOT roadway, this is the entrance of Sherwood Forest on Gum Ranch, and you can see here, it's in an interior, so this is, this would be a non-conforming sign, because it's in the middle of the right-of-way.
Who takes care of that land?
The landscapers.
Parks, yes, sir.
That's in the middle of the right-of-way.
Middle of the right-of-way.
Not, not in the DOT right-of-way, but in the middle of the city right-of-way.
Correct.
Okay.
Sharon Hills, this is a block and stone wall, been here for quite a while, within the right-of-way.
Of city, of the city. And I'm emphasizing that, because we're not going to have any control over the DOT, but we are going to have control of the city side.
Correct. And then, so wanted to mention some other existing non-conformities, so the Aldersgate, which was recently damaged, that's, that's on Onwassa, that's city right-of-way, correct? Manor Manor, that is a DOT roadway. That's recently been damaged, they have not tried to do anything, it's, there is one small pole sticking up. Sharon Hills, which I showed you, Sherwood Forest, which I showed you, Deerfield, that is in the ETJ, so that's not a city at all, so the state would be involved with that. Williams Farm, that's private, and so you also have private rights-of-way, so would, our ordinance usually, it's worded where it's either public or private rights-of-way, we look at it, it's the same, but you do have a little bit of a nuance there with that, along with Riverwalk Landing, they have a very small sign, I believe it's on the right side of the entrance. And there may be others. We really tried to brainstorm to see if there was any other signs that may exist out there. Bryn Mawr has some signs, but they're off to the side, I believe, and there may be some others. So, as alluded to earlier, this is the Aldersgate sign, you can see, it's, it's in the middle of the grass area, which is in the middle of the right-of-way, because you have streets on both sides. And in the bottom right-hand corner, you can see, that's the most recent damage that occurred, a bottom right-hand corner. I believe if you go by there, oh no, this is from, this is from February, so I don't know if they've glued that piece back on or not, but obviously, they can do minor repairs and work, or minor repairs and maintenance to it. They just cannot, as the ordinances are currently written, they cannot tear that down and replace it back with a monument style, or any type of sign, based on the way the ordinances are currently written, since this is a city right-of-way.
Here, you've got something a little different. You don't have a, you have a very wide right-of-way. You know, you could see that as long as it was not within the DOT right-of-way on Gum Ranch, or whatever, what Onwassa now, that's, Onwassa, I believe, is ours now.
City, city. That's why I emphasized the city a second ago.
So it's city, city, so, you know.
I'd be fine with that, if we just pushed it back a little bit, so cars could see going back and forth. I mean, that would be my biggest concern, if you fixed that out, it would be a big deal.
So we maintain that one also?
Yes, sir. We do the landscaping all inside of it.
They don't have a homeowner's.
They don't have an HOA that actively handles that.
And I believe, per your email, that, that, I don't know for a fact, it was going based on what the residents stated, that it was the mowing crews that did the damage to the sign.
Yeah, more than likely, there's, no one's going to drive onto there and knock it down. If you're going to hit it with a car, it's going to knock off more than the corner, but we go through and we maintain that whole median, and as Mr. Warden said, that's a larger median. The rationale there is, if there's not an active HOA, it's part of our normal beautification maintenance that we do in the city. And as Mr. Warden said, again, being city, city, you see that as an opportunity to maintain.
What if, what if we were to deed that area to, to a, to a private group, you know, where we wouldn't have to maintain that, and as long as, as long as it's, is safe, and even though it might, then it's no longer in the city right-of-way, is that correct?
That would be one option.
Yeah, I mean, I, I mean, I'd like to get out of the maintenance of the business, personally. You know, I'd like to, I'd like to see if the HOA, if the homeowner's group wants to do something with their sign, okay, and you're now responsible for the sign, you're responsible for landscaping, and you've got to cut the grass.
And that's one of the options we've talked about, as staff, theoretically, if that were, if that were an option, short of getting rid of Michael completely, that would, it would work to satisfy that.
I don't think he's got anything to do with that.
I'm going to hurt his feelings.
Well, I mean, I mean, it is part of beautification, but, but if beautification's important to the folks of Aldersgate, let them be responsible for the beautification of their area. I'd rather not incur the cost of, of the city doing that.
The, the right-of-way on this one, for Aldersgate, I think that strategy works. The, the one up on, yeah, Sherwood Forest, I'm not sure if it satisfies the same, I don't know the measurements, and we talked about it briefly, and Sharon Hills?
Even worse.
No chance. But for Aldersgate, theoretically, there's one solution.
So why is there no chance of that one?
It's so wide, the median's smaller, and the sign is wider, so you just don't have that.
Well, the other one, because it has a light, does that not make a difference? Because it controls traffic, does that not make a difference as far as?
Not in terms of right-of-way, no.
So they're non-conforming signs, at this point, but they can keep them as long as they stay, stay there, right?
That's correct.
They can make superficial improvements to it, such as paint letters and stuff like that.
Lower-level maintenance, yes, sir.
And another option would be to obtain, acquire an easement on either side, relocate it to the side, and build the brick monuments like Carolina Forest and Williamsburg Plantation, and Bill Ford Holmes examples that I gave you. That's another option as well, as the ordinance is currently written. So there's things that are, options that are available, but it's just not the option that they would desire to do. So that's part of the issue.
Do you maintain that one too?
Yes, sir.
You know, and the other issue we got, besides the expenses, liability, I mean, if, if, if we damage their sign, because we're, we're mowing, well, guess who's got it, guess who's on the hook? We are.
Yeah, and for, for Aldersgate, however, for this sign, it's part of their fundraising to build a new sign, and the goal is, they want to build a good-looking sign.
Sure.
Right, that's, that's an awesome thing, and that's what we want to see, some of the other examples, which is great, because it's been there, and that's where we come up with that challenge. It's been there for so long, so then when you update the sign, then you're creating challenges, just based on the new ordinance.
Got a couple of issues, legal issues going on here. Number one, when you abandon a right-of-way, you could have that grassy area in Aldersgate surveyed, and you could abandon it. Who does it go to? Well, it goes to the adjoining property owner. Who's the property owner? The city, because you're surrounded on both sides. Let's get beyond that, and say that we abandoned it, and somehow, we deeded it. There is no active HOA, as I understand it, in Aldersgate or in Sherwood Forest. If I lived in that subdivision, I wouldn't want to put in my name, for continuation for the future, you know, they don't have, unless they somehow put together some entity as far as maintaining, or you may be back here in 20, 30 years, with the same discussion as, it's grown up, there's no active HOA, so are we just going to let it grow up and let the community be that way, or so forth? So that's kind of, I think, and Michael can speak to this more, but how it actually, all these sites got involved, as far as the city taking over, because they were eyesore's. No act- No active HOAs and eyesoreers, and so as far as whoever the manager at that time was, said, let's take care of this, this, we're better than this, let's, let's go ahead and do these sites while you're out there mowing anyway. But you've got some legal issues here, too, I think, as far as just turning it over to John Doe, whoever John Doe may be, and they'd be willing to take over the responsibility of maintaining it, since there are no active HOAs. That really puts a hindrance, like it hasn't merled with, with other issues that y'all have seen, these also have some challenges.
I had a question, just common sense, layman's, non-coop person question. Right of way from the larger street, larger artery, whatever that means, not the one going into the neighborhood. I, I understand fully. And I get why it is in a right of way, it's surrounded literally by city property and city streets. What is the value of, and what is the purpose and value of the right of way going into the residential area? Like, do we have sewer under there we need to get to, water under there we need to get to? What, what is the, it is a right of way, it's surrounded by city property, I get that. But why? Why do we need it to be that? Why, like, if we establish, and this is why I'm asking the question, like, a certain amount of distance off of a main thoroughfare that might need to be expanded, or otherwise dug up, dealt with, and, and, you know, there's certain functions that need to happen in a right of way on some streets, but in a residential entryway street, you're more than likely dealing with a lot less of that, I would think, maybe some, I don't know. Is it, why, why space from one street? I understand space from the neighborhood entryways, doesn't seem to merit the same amount of concern?
I think it a lot has to do with the developer and what they want in the entrance to their subdivision. You know, it's an attractive thing, you know, and that, that median and things like that. But then, since nobody, you know, owns it, yeah, it ends up just, you know, sort of simpler to give it to the city and we accept it. See, we don't have to accept it. We don't have to, you know, we don't have to accept that design.
I guess it, like, the, the common sense question is, why are the outside corners fine and the inside medians not?
Well, the outside corners, it would be private property.
If it's a brick structure in either location, so it's just on private property?
It would be private property and not within the city's right of way.
Yeah, the, the right of way's not encumbered. You know, that's the issue. It's a general rule, right of way shouldn't be encumbered.
Right.
You know, unless we allow it to be encumbered.
Unless we qualify it encumbered.
We do, for example, we do easements, or rights of entry, or not rights of entry.
Encrochements.
Yeah, encroachment agreements for special purposes.
And usually that's like the, the fiber companies, they're putting underground utilities.
Right.
So, you don't have that above the ground component. There may be some, but for the fiber that runs below ground. So, down the side of a typical street, a lot of times you'll have water on one side, and then you'll have the, the cable, the bone, fiber, and usually sewer could be, but I think a lot of times you see sewer in the middle of the street. So.
And, and that, that whole parcel, that whole, and that's a fairly large.
Yes.
Is, is owned by the city. Do we own it? Legally own it?
I have looked at it, it was mapped in, I want to say the sixties, I have it upstairs, and it was dedicated and accepted by the city as the right of way, as.
So, we own it.
And, and you bought it at that time with a sign, I'm sure there, maybe not this sign, but a sign when, things change.
See, and, and usually when that happens, you know, you've got a homeowners association, and we see that as no, no big deal, you know? But then when the homeowners association stops to exist, then somebody inherits it.
I think Carolina Forest Boulevard, the landscape median would be a good example. Right now, the Carolina Forest Homeowners Association is responsible for maintaining that median.
Oh, yeah, the whole median.
But if that association goes defunct, I'm sure I know who will be on speed dial number one.
You know, they've, they've, speaking of political signs, they've, they've been pretty anti-political signs in that median, and they, they continue, so it's always a fight, fight with them how to get political signs in there.
Yeah, part of that feedback that, that Mr. Warden was giving in terms of, what are those options? That's what we're, when we, we're looking for that for here, for what we can research further, just like Mr. Carter's saying, to bring back to you to say, how do we solve these issues? One, for a request that we have now, for, for something that's good that a community's trying to figure out, and then two, how do we deal with six or seven others? So, hopefully in the future, we don't have those anymore, but we need to, we need to satisfy, we need to get it to a point where if something's non-conforming and it happens in the future, then the city, the council at this time says, well, then that would need to come into compliance. But if nothing ever happens to that sign, then theoretically it stays in perpetuity until.
And the argument, if I lived in that neighborhood, it is your right of way, you need to mow it. That's what I would say to you, city.
Well, if, and if you do that, then I say, then, that's, if that's the case, your sign is non-conforming, put it down.
That's fine, that's fine. I'm not saying that's exactly where you are.
I know, I know. And, you know, you, you're right. I, I think we like to, want to encourage nice neighborhood signs. But as you said, what happens, even if you dedicate it to an H O A, the HOAs don't seem to live forever, they, they just peter out, especially in an established neighborhood where there's really no real reason to have one, because the roads, the roads are city-owned, the water sewer is city-owned, there's no real purpose other than maybe if they would happen to have a, a community center or a pool, a pool, or a pool house or something, that's a little different, but, but most of these are not going to have, meet that, so.
One thing we should do is make sure we kind of nip that in the bud when we approve site plans for residential.
Mayor, you did that when you adopted the U D O, you said, moving forward, this is the standard. And so, this is one, I would say this is one of the unintended consequences. The new development standard means you are going to do it moving forward, that's why you make them non-conforming, and you say, we're not going to allow it. But just like this example, it happens because they want to put up a better sign. They want something that shows that, let's just say it's pride in their subdivision or their street, and it's a good thing from them, but it doesn't fit in a ordinance because it's non-conforming. So, that's, we're, a couple of these options here. What we tried to do, Mayor, when, when we had the, the email from Ms. Caserta, was we tried to look at some of the options we could bring to council to at least get some gestation going, and then you give us some other direction, because we're trying to figure it out, but as, as you're saying, it, it creates some challenges, so we're.
What if, like, I mean, maybe it's not right, but what if we allow them to do their signs at their expense and do it, and it's still technically ours because of the, the H O A thing, and eventually if it doesn't, we still own it? Like, we're not giving over rights to it, we're just allowing them to, if they have a group of people that are willing to pitch in the money and do the work and keep it up and do the updates and all that stuff, could we not do that?
So, the second bullet point that Ryan has here, it says, leave the U D O as, as stated, and then basically you would define that sign as a city-owned wayfinding sign, which as Brian pointed, that's something theoretically is allowed. Your point is spot on, the subdivision, they would give the money for it, we'd go through a formal process, we would knock it out, this is, this is an option. It, it may be the best option, just know that once it happens that one time, once we declare it as a city, you'd still come back to Mr. Warden's concern that we're maintaining it?
Well, let them maintain it. What to say, if they were allowed to do all this extra landscape and let them say, hey, we're going to.
That's one way to work within, theoretically within the U D O.
Right. If you want to go that direction, I think the bullet three is that we would need to bring back an amendment, and we would need some direction on, we can allow that for only the four, five, or six existing signs that predated a certain date?
Similar to a, 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 what am I trying to say?
Grandfathered?
No.
No, grandfathered.
No, grandfathered, but, but, but I'll.
An exception.
Overlay, don't you? Overlay, that, you could identify them as overlay, you know?
I'd overlay them as an exception, that if they were constructed for X, then.
But that's another option, right? That's one of those things we would present back to council.
If somebody would come to us and said, I want to buy some wayfinding signs for the city, we would certainly figure out some way of, of accepting the donation of that, so this is no different. You know, if somebody wanted to just fund in general wayfinding signs, this, you could, you could argue, as you said, that this is a wayfinding sign into Aldersgate neighborhood, and that certainly would meet a wayfinding definition.
And if we could, if we could staff that ordinance correctly, then what we would say is, we build that on the outside in the future, we build it on.
Yeah.
But that's right, that's what we're saying. We try and figure out the, how to make this work, and then don't do it again in the future.
Yeah, don't do it again.
Because this is the way that the signs were built historically. We know that's fact. You put it right in the middle when you come in, you see it on the way in, you see it on the way out, you see it on the way down the street, that's how you know it is the definition of a wayfinding sign before it pointed you to the library, it pointed you to the subdivision.
How does that figure out with city signage, welcome signs? We're trying to identify the city, we're trying to identify these neighborhoods, and I, I applaud these people, and they're, they're not HOAs, but they have pride in their neighborhood, they're willing to dig in their own pocket and pay for a sign.
And, Mr. Viner, it's the same, what they're trying to do is the same general concept of what our new wayfinding signs are, are outside, welcome city of Jacksonville, it's the same style of sign, so it would fit, and I think that's why Ryan, when he brought it up the first time to us, hey, you can declare this as a wayfinding sign.
Good idea.
Yeah, we, yeah, there's some, there's some things that Mr. Carter's got to make sure we do correctly, but the idea is spot on because it could solve the issue, you just got to make sure that we don't do something that creates more of those in the future.
Definitely.
Just remember, legal counsel got us in this mess right now.
Previous legal.
They usually get you in, and they got a fine way to get you. That's how they, that's how they stand for it.
Six years ago, I didn't sit here.
This deal at Aldersgate, was there a petition on this, or was there a letter that was signed off, followed by several residents in Aldersgate?
Mr. Mayor, Teresa Caserta is not here this evening.
No, she's not feeling well.
Beth is here, is right, representing Aldersgate, but there is a group of that.
Right.
So, wasn't necessarily the petition, the fact was, they had a sign, they wanted to fix it, so then they were going to raise the money, you know, like Mr. Sosa's saying, and so, that's what brought it to a head. So, they're working on it actively now to get it to that point. Luckily, the email comes through, the request, it's a great process because we've got a little bit of time to try and figure out how to solve it.
All right. Were they going to just replace the sign completely? Is that, was that a viable?
That's the concept, in the location, because again, in theory, you think, hey, as long as we replace it in the location, that should be good, similar to what Sharon Hills.
I think that's similar to what they're wanting to do. They're wanting to build a parallel, a sign that's parallel to the Onsvill right of way, that's made of brick.
Right.
And.
So, it'll get mowed over.
I would just say, I think they want a sign that will intimidate the lawnmower guy, so he won't be as close, cutting as, cutting as close as, as he would in another sign, so.
A more substantial sign.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
They've got to get a bigger mower.
We're just going to put a landscaping pad around it.
If we damage their sign, they're going to, they're going to damage our mower, that's what.
Just tell them to stop running into the sign.
Going to get mowed over.
So, with that being said, as far as direction, I would like to have the city code revised so that there's no verbiage in the city code, you need to find it in the U D O, we need to reference signage, see the U D O, and then draft the U D O with whatever it is that the mayor and council would like to have, that, that allows us to do whatever it is that the mayor, the desire of the mayor and council.
Exception, encroachment, whatever you got, wayfinding, sign on way.
And then while, let's say 15 years from now, if that group, you know, doesn't live there anymore, and then, then we have to take back over, we have the right to do it, so we don't have the nuisance like you're talking about earlier, and we're not deeding it to someone that's no longer around, and I think that checks off.
It's their sign on our land right now.
They have to give that sign to the city, don't they, once they, once they do it?
If they put it in the city right of way, I think you have taken it.
I think, I think so. I think from a legal standpoint, I think, I think they're going to have to give that sign, dedicate that sign to us somehow, don't they?
Through this.
You can make it happen.
Yeah, and what happens here is, through this, just so everybody hears this, if they give us money, we're building a sign through that process, because they're building on city property.
Right.
So, it's, it's our sign.
And, and our land, and we're going to have to continue, since it's our land, we got to continue to do the maintenance on that.
As I understand the story, the builder of the sign, whoever they contracted with, came in wanting to talk about getting approval of a site plan to put the sign there, and it, a sketch, et cetera, and dimension, dimensions and so forth, because you have to have a zoning program.
A sign company reached out and said, hey, can I get a permit to pull this sign? And they were told, well, that's in the right of way, we cannot permit it the way the ordinance is currently written.
So, I think it's, it's better for them to build a sign after they get a permit, because when you turn it over to the city to do it, you can imagine all the checks and different things.
Right, right, but can't they build and then dedicate it?
Yes, sir, we can work something out there, I don't think.
So, Mayor, I would say, if it works for council right now, we can work on a, an amendment, a U D O amendment, we're looking at a bullet three, right?
Well, at minimum, revise the city code to refer all sign stuff to U D O, that's number one, that's, we need that done. And then the bullet three. Unless we do a bullet two, but I mean, it just really depends on which direction we go in.
I think bullet three, I think, I think you need to define the exceptions, and my name, I think.
Yes, sir.
My name, my year.
Yeah, is that, is that good for what we're going to try and bring forth? And we'll, we'll work on that now, so as soon as we can get it back, and I'll email.
I, I do, would like to have some clarification, and this may not be popular, but if you've got a five-by-five sign today, and you want to go back to 25-by-25 sign, I mean, is that something that should be written into?
What's it saying to U D O?
Well, right now, it's maximum height is six, maximum width of 10, and 32 square feet worth of the surface area.
Easily make it subject council approval by a management report.
I mean, it's, I just.
Anyone have any objection?
Well, like you said, but that's the current standard, what, you said, six, say it again?
Six feet tall, 10 feet wide, with 32 square feet worth of sign area.
It's pretty big.
I don't know what this, I don't know what they were proposing, that's the only reason I raise it, is that if they're asking for something bigger than that, then you've got to look at also adjusting.
I think, I think, I, it just sounds like to me, we're going to make an exception for them to be able to do something different because they were grandfathered in, but I think, I think from a legal defensible side standpoint, we've got to hold them to the same regulation that all of the future residential development signs have got, got to be.
I like the concept of the council approving the sign, and of course, whatever the standards are, there's no problem there, but in that same action that you take to approve it, you, they could agree to dedicate that, and you could accept that in, in that document, just like you take, dedicate streets and water and sewer, there's a process, and that same process could be modified for you taking it over and for them offering it to you.
That way, we don't have to look at, it's an exception versus a pathway to.
There are things that have been offered to the city, I can think of one right over there on the other end of Onsvill Drive, tract of land, it's a ditch, you know what I may be talking about? And we said, no, we don't want that, there's no use for it, whatever, we have our easements, our pipes and so forth, and it's nothing but a hole in the ground. You know, a church on it wanted to offer it to us. the ground. You know, a church on it wouldn't offer it to us. But again, my point being, you as a council do not have to accept anything that you don't want to on your land, on your right-of-way. But by this kind of a council action, you could have accepted. It could be dedicated to you by this group or persons, and the whole thing can be wrapped up in one action where it is now yours and, and to maintain and to, so forth. But I think that is a good...
Okay. And would the sign have to meet?
Yes, sir. Unless you modify the...
Right. Unless we modify the sign for everybody.
Yeah. I think this standard, I still agree with that concept, that this is the standard we should set for that to come in. So, when they call back and ask, Ryan, hey, what's their max value of the sign, 32 square feet with this and that?
I just don't have the dimensions, so I don't know what it is exactly that this individual subdivision is interested in.
Who are they?
Aldersgate right-of-way residents.
I say, who are they?
Aldersgate's not a legal entity.
It's Ms. Caserta.
Pardon?
Ms. Caserta. And now, her rep.
They were looking at 10 feet.
And that's who we're going to accept the dedication.
I have the email that was sent out to the mayor and council. It has on it the dimensions. It is 14 feet long, if you want to call it that, and it is 51, excuse me, 51.5 inches high and 14 feet long. Does that make sense?
We may save them some money with our new standard signs.
I know Teresa and I did it out for 10 feet, the new signs.
And, and interesting side note, so from what I understand, the building code no longer requires engineering if it's 6 feet or less. So, there's actually a benefit to not exceed that 6-foot height.
No, I think so. I wish Teresa was here.
Mayor's foundation.
If you're, Mayor, if the council's good with it, and this is just the direction, I think you've got us to a good point. We'll relay back, and like Mr. Carter said, we've got potentially their, their proposed builder. We'll communicate back and forth and work through them to bring that back to council as a format that we can get it here. And like I said, I think it's still going to have a good look, and it may save them a few dollars to buy a mower.
Are we going to maintain it?
Well, Mr. Sosa's going to maintain it, or you guys are going to have to. I think he's really busy.
I like cutting grass in my way of work.
I think he's really busy. That's a different, that's a different discussion. That's right.
Sorry, I'm mowing the corn.
They don't want you to tread. You guys can't drive. Hey, it's just mowers.
Well, Mr. Bittner can go and mow it.
Thank you, Mayor.
If that'll work, that's what we'll work on. We'll try and bring it back quickly, so we're...
Got all that?
Thank you, thank you for thinking outside the box.
Okay.
Yeah, let's see. We have some budget discussion.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So, this is, this is our last meeting before the consideration, unless, unless council changes our plan. As you'll see here, fiscal year, we've gone over this four times now. We're working towards having the balanced budget adopted by June 30. The tax rate, we're proposing no change in the tax rate. Water and sewer rate increases, 2.25% increase as scheduled, and then the recycling residential sanitation rate increase, as previously mentioned, at $4 per residential. And then, there are a couple of other fees that go along with that that we've discussed this year. So, when we're looking at the overall impact to our citizens, our taxpayers, and our business owners, these are the items that we want to continue to push out to those individuals so they know what to expect as they're moving on to July 1. This is that calendar. As you recall, we did finish the public hearing on April 16, so we had the opportunity for people to give us feedback early on and not scheduling it right before. May 7 is where we're at now, so May 21, unless council changes that, we're going to bring the full budget for consideration, and we'll have, one, I'll present on that one, and then council can consider adoption of the FY '25 proposed budget in two weeks from today. Total, total budget for next year at $119 million, plus or minus. You'll see the change from the amended FY '24. We just want to show you that comparison. It's consistently going to be about the same every year. When you look at the proposed budget versus what's final expended, I always encourage people, look at the audited numbers. The audited numbers are where the rubber meets the road. It shows you what we did that year. You can inflate, overinflate, or deflate a budget at the beginning of the year. It all comes down to what you've spent. That's why what we're showing you here is the FY '24 amended version, not what you proposed and accepted at the beginning of the year, but what you're looking at. And then, remember this, 127, because when the audit comes in in October, November, then we want to see how far under that number matters for the final FY '24, and then how that compares to '25. And then, the last item that I wanted to draw attention to you today is just that comparison. When you're looking at the general fund, you see the property taxes for FY '24 at 27.5, about a million-dollar increase, what we're proposing for, from '24 to '25. And then, the sales tax. This is where you see a bigger growth from '24 to '25 is in the sales tax. It's crazy to say, to think that, but remember, we're more of, of a sales tax generator than we are property tax, because we're really only taxing about 42% of our overall property. That's the big difference. If things continue on a pattern, there may come a point in the next decade where you're seeing sales tax exceed what ad lorum tax are. And that's just a reality of the way that we do business here in Jacksonville. And then, the last line item, just to show you the difference here, if you remember last year when we adopted the FY '24, our fund balance appropriation for general fund was right around $400,000, about $420,000. We're at the same number this year. What you're seeing for the FY '24 amended are the things that changed throughout the year, and that brought it to 2.9 million. That comes into projects. That comes into different revenues that we've done. So, as we get, if we receive a grant, we bring those revenues in. We also bring those expenditures in. And so, you see last year's budget, what we, what we're planning on now is 73. The point here is, for FY '25, we're looking at 66 million. Even if that 2-point, roughly 2.5 million was outside of the FY '24, we would still be about $5 million short of what last year's number, and we're adding some things to next year's budget. We're adding the three full-time positions and a number of other projects. Where you see that change is the capital. If you recall, last year, you bought a really big fire truck. That's, that's a number. You also recall, you had a revenue stream for that really big fire truck. So, that's awesome. But that's where you're going to see a lot of the movement. This is not a significant change in your operational expenses for the year. It's going to be capital, projects, and equipment. So, just focusing on that, you might have people that ask you those questions. Well, look, we're opening up Darios in a week. You know, what are we going to see on the sales tax change? These factors all play in to how we see our revenues moving up and down year over year. Those numbers, sales tax, although it has been called the fairest tax of them all, it's also the most volatile. When people run out of money, they can't buy things anymore. So, the ad lorum is typically the safest tax. Sales tax is fair, but we can see ebbs and flows. And I guarantee you, if you watch it month to month, if you saw a distribution on that, you're going to see it ebb and flow. At certain points of the year, you're going to see some expenses go up, and you're going to see some expenses go down. So, we see that over the course of the year. They just want to draw attention to that on the revenue side because that shows you, goes back to your question, Mayor, how we're going to provide for these things moving forward. The last comment being, as we're thinking big picture and some big investments, we need to know that we're maintaining this general fund side because that's where you're going to pay that debt service out of, is what your, what your revenue streams are. So, we want to earmark those new revenues to be able to provide for, provide for those bigger items moving forward. It's four slides, Mayor. That's all I had on that. Questions that we've missed or items that we didn't draw attention to that you need? We haven't received any other comments from the community or questions. I haven't. We'll still be ready to answer any throughout the next two weeks.
Just post it online.
Yes, sir. Post it online. City Clerk has a copy. Library has a copy. If you need them, we can go over it with anybody that wants to sit and talk with us about it.
Good. Yeah, I'm sorry. Want to see?
I do. Thank you, Mayor. If you remember, a couple of weeks ago, we had a lot going on. It doesn't seem to change. As I mentioned earlier, Pam McIntosh has been here for 30 years, and she says, we just, we're busier now than we are. She'll probably say the same thing next year, but that's good. That just shows you lots going on. You're going to see up front, the Jacksonville Jamboree. We had the opportunity on Saturday to be out here and see the layout. What an exciting event that is constantly showing growth. We had the Battle of the Bands this year for the first time. We had five local bands that were competing. We brought in some judges that got the special tin up front. I think that was an excellent add by both the TDA team and our recreation team to come together. It's good seeing that symmetry. Lots of people. One of the coolest things that we do at the Jamboree is we provide free entertainment. And I say that from the petting zoo, to the wall climbing, to the swings, to the train rides, to the, to the hula dancers. Free entertainment matters. I took a call this afternoon from an individual that said, hey, how do we, how do we create opportunities for people that may not have money to have the entertainment? This is it. And you know, at Winterfest, it's ridiculous. That, the lines are a lot crazier at Winterfest because people like to play in snow. But here, there are more activities because you have a bigger space, and so you have a lot more happy faces. So, I think between recreation and TDA, a job well done, just to see the activity and the growth that we're going to have for the coming year. This kicks off our concert series as well, so look forward to many more fun things. That's a new avenue, and it's going to go alongside our Jacksonville Ospreys this season as well. So, multiple entertainment options that we haven't had in the past that we're going to have right now. Arbor Day, we celebrated Arbor Day last Friday. You will see Ms. Edwards and Smokey the Bear. I can't tell you which one was received better.
It's not Smokey the Bear.
Smokey, definitely Smokey.
Oh, it's Smokey Bear. There's no the there. So, it's Smokey Bear, and that's EY. Great to have Arbor Day. Think about it, this year, 44 years as a tree city. That's a long-term commitment. If I've, if I've ever said it before, that's one year less than we've had Carlotta, so it's not as impressive as what she does for our team, but what it is...
The first tree is...
That's right. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you being out there. So, but that's, you show that dedication over time to something, and that's, that's a commitment you don't see throughout, throughout the community. The Tree Board and Environmental and Appearance Committee was active here, and you'll see us here at Parkwood Elementary for the occasion. It's a tangible effort for kids to see that we're actually planting trees year over year, and I think that's incredible for the students to be a part of it. You've got our Parks Team out there. They're dedicated to it as well because it means something and part of that beautification you were talking about earlier. Luckily, we don't have to maintain this tree. Once we plant it, the schools are going to have to do that. So, you see our, you see our guys there. They love the event. They get out and get active every year and look forward to it, and then to whichever school we're going to be at. I think it's a value add for the community. We did have our Vietnam Veterans Remembrance. That played, that took place on April 27. Mayor was there, along with MCIE's Chief of Staff Colonel Mike Fitzgerald, another great event. 21-gun salute, as well as having the 2nd Division Marine Band present. Anytime you have the ability to come together, especially at our, at our memorial gardens, it really shows the, the fabric of the community. That's who we are. That's the community we, we support, and all of our veterans deserve to be recognized and appreciated as many times throughout the year that we can appreciate them. So, the more opportunity we have, we're going to take advantage of those opportunities. It's not something we're going to step back on unless someday a city council tells us to stop. Until then, we appreciate our veterans, and we appreciate our active duty. Sons of American Revolution, they had their charter event as well. That was on April 27, a busy day. You'll see, the mayor was just all over the place. They recognized our public safety staff, Sergeant Patrick, firefighter Nick Bowles, and Lieutenant Zachary Getz. You see Chief Funicero there as well. Chief Tomlin just showed up to take someone's award. I thought that was, I thought that was impressive. It's good to have somebody that'll step up to take someone's award. He gave a speech in honor of, of somebody else. But again, when you're appreciating our public safety staff and our team, those are opportunities that we don't get enough of, and we need to really celebrate that opportunity. Thanks for the Sons of the American Revolution for taking that time because although we say thank you throughout the year, it's, it's a big deal. So, we do appreciate what our, what our guys and ladies do throughout. And then, I mentioned Fabric of the Community and the Lightkeeper Awards. This is something that's put on by the United Way and such an excellent opportunity this year. The first one is, is Charles and Leah Effort, they were the Fabric of the Community recipients. And then, this next one, you see other people that you may recognize inside the slides there. They didn't get an award, so we don't mention them. But then here, Ms. Ike Johnson and Berlinda Castillo, first and second place for the Adult Volunteer Awards. Again, to have volunteers in the community that step up, just like what we saw at the Jamboree, tons of volunteers in our community. In the United Way, they keep a, a very detailed process for how they bring in volunteers and get them back out in the community so that they're hitting areas of importance to them. To celebrate volunteers with the Lightkeeper Awards is just fun because it's a challenge to put on these events. If you just did it with paid staff alone, I promise you, we would not be successful. So, being able to recognize volunteers, it may just be once a year, but thank you to Raquel Painter and her team at the United Way for leading us through the process and having such a positive impact on the community. The Onsville Civic Affairs Committee, they step up. This is one of those, their initiatives to really appreciate those that stay involved in and around the community, whether it's one year or it's multiple years. Thank you to all of our, all of our volunteers. That's all we have, Mayor.
Thank you. Very good. We have a motion to adjourn. Somebody wants to go?